For October eighth, twenty twenty five. All stand for the pledge of allegiance and all among silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one and under God indivisible, for liberty, justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item C, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion a second to approve the agenda for tonight's?
We have to approve second.
Thank you. No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Number two administrator and board member reports. Item A, Ms. Funston.
Okay. So, our high. One started. Um. There on out. The grades will. Um, and then. Up next week, um, the teachers. Other than getting. Parents, um, so hopefully have a turnout of that. Um, we. Or to train. Or they, um, the. This could, uh. But it has. Such as. And, um, and then the most. That happened.
Awesome. Good to know.
Talk like. So. I'm here and looking good. Okay. Um. Um. Oh, thank you. So, I can't wait.
Thanks. Thank you.
You'd have the kids put their handprints in it before it dries. You'd have the kids put their handprints on it before it dries. I would think that would be cool. Nice little history. Every one of them around the whole thing.
Parents for in front. He's alive. Of. Big weather. Part of this. My big this. That's me. That's me. Uh. I'm children. Who they can parent future. Please. Okay. I'm sorry.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other administrator reports?
Uh, I do have, I have my report and then, uh. Athletic director Zachary has asked me to give his report because he got last minute tickets to the Cubs game and I've.
Yeah, so I don't blame him.
I don't either, so. At there in the playoffs, in case you were wondering everyone, so. Big deal. Anyway, my report, uh, we began bargaining last night. We look forward to productive, uh, bargaining session with our teaching partners and. Look to be very collaborative and we hope that continues. Uh, also this morning, uh. Well, yesterday, our policy committee got together and cranked through several policies that we'll be bringing forward as a, for a first reading at the next board meeting. And then this morning, we met for over two hours with Neola about the latest round of updates for policies that will add to the list, but we. We got through every one of those with, uh. Amended corrections and edits, so hopefully we can bring those forward, forward as well for our first reading next time. Uh. Athletic. Update. The girls' golf season ended on September twenty second with their sectional at Logan's Port. It was a good year with much improvement. We're hoping to grow numbers next year with two seniors graduating. North Newton is hosting the Midwest Conference Cross Country Meet on Saturday, October eleventh. The high school team will compete in Rinzel Air Sectional on Saturday, October eighteenth. The varsity volleyball team begins sectional play on Tuesday, October fourteenth at Pioneer High School. They play at six thirty PM Central Daylight Time against Tri-County. Football is currently three and four, heading into two conference games in the upcoming weeks. They are looking to finish with a winning record for the first time since twenty twenty one. They travel to North White on Friday, October tenth, before finishing the season with Tri-County at home on October seventeenth. We are still looking for volunteers to work the ticket gate and concession stand for our home games. Winter sports are ready to begin. The first day for girls' basketball and girls' wrestling is October twentieth. Girls' swimming will begin on October twenty seventh. Boys' wrestling begins on November third. Boys' basketball and boys' swimming begin their seasons on November tenth. And then upcoming special event dates. Volleyball Senior Night will be Thursday, October tenth, between the JV and Varsity Games. Football, Girls' Golf, Cross Country, Cheer, Senior Night is Friday, October seventeenth, before kickoff at approximately six PM. And the softball state champion ring ceremony will be Saturday, December twentieth, between the JV and Varsity Basketball Games. That concludes the report.
Over to that one.
I have a question on the athletic side. Since the fall sports are ending, when is our scheduled fall banquet?
We need to, to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add to this report that I would just like to thank one of the parents that came out from Morocco. Um, I can say his name, right?
Yes.
Val. Stuleski?
Stuleski.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have a thirty thousand dollar, uh, speaker system in the gym. We can now use it. We can use the microphones. We can play music. It sounds amazing. We can use it for graduation. We haven't been able to use it in a long time. He came out and took a lot of time into fixing that.
That is fantastic.
Wonderful.
So.
Free of charge.
Free of charge. He just wanted to be able to hear his kids' names over the intercom and to be able to hear the music clearly. So, he came out and. Did a lot of investigation on it, so.
Beauty of small communities.
Yep, so, so I don't have anything to add, but I have a question and I didn't get to ask you this before. So, I like Mr. Zachary's update. So, next month, could we get an IT update where we are with the? Facebook page? I know that there, I sent you some pictures of some things that needed to be updated and I know we were kind of in a stalling pattern on that for a little bit. But if we could get maybe some of those things.
And on that conversation Mike, you and I talked about for IT, having only one ISP for our, you don't have the failover.
Mm-hmm.
Or that, have we got any further in that conversation with? Their company? Looking to get another.
Looking, that's where we're at, yeah.
But then I want to have, you know, with only one connectivity that goes down, like it did this last summer, the entire organization's down, so.
Okay, and moving on to I D, board administrator reports, and I believe that Mrs. Hickel has something she'd like to share with everybody.
I do, and that's good news. I'm going to stick to my script. That way I don't. Get emotional. Hopefully it, it works out. A new chapter for North Newton. I'm going to start my board member update pertaining to our superintendent search with my go-to Bible verse for two thousand twenty-five, Esther four fourteen. And who knows, but you have come to your royal position for such a time as this. We're grateful to each applicant who has taken interest in our superintendent search. Through this process in the past seven to eight months, God has shown yet again that his timing and his plan is everything. He has opened the door for an amazing opportunity. Dr. Mike has offered and wants to stay here in our Spartan family, and we have entered into contract negotiations with him. We truly believe that he has been called to lead North Newton for such a time as this, to guide, strengthen, and inspire our schools. The North Newton School Board of Trustees is hopeful to have a contract, have the contract information posted by the end of this week with the goal of having the contract hearing at our next meeting on October twenty-second. The vote will take place at that meeting after the hearing in our regular meeting at that same night. So, we're hoping that the potential official start date will be kicking off on November first. So, that is our update for our superintendent search.
Fair enough. Appreciate it.
I want to thank Mike for. Offered to stick around and take the entire board for putting in all the effort to. Make this happen, so.
To clarify, this is a long-term deal. Um, this isn't a one-year, this isn't a two-year, this is as long as. Dr. Mike wants to stay working. I believe he wants to retire at a certain age and he's offered to retire with us. So, we're very excited. To move forward and look forward to.
The continuity, the, all of our administrators, work well together, directors, everybody, just.
Right, and the con, the initial contracts for three years, so.
Yes.
Yep.
And if, if I can say something, just so it's memorialized on camera, it's because of the board, the administrators, the staff, the community, that. Led me to this decision, so this is a special place that deserves better than what it's gotten lately and we're gonna help it all move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay. Yay, that's all I got.
Hey, let's go home.
Yep.
Number three, I know this is a personal favorite for everybody, the student spotlight. So, whoever would like to.
Now, this is our first time getting these back on the agenda.
Last time. You weren't here.
I weren't.
Yeah, you weren't here.
First meeting I missed.
I have it right here. Yeah. Um. Um. I. Okay, well. Those. Into. A big sister of. Here. Yeah. As. This is. Like a sixth grader. This. I. It's hard. Challenge yourself. There's one. It's from what's a positive. And. Just around here. Our school community. It was.
Ducking behind the girl. Here.
I was gonna say again, mine, mine was stapled together. That's okay, you can keep it. He needed it, but that's okay. That's okay. You can give it to her, mom. His friend. Teacher. He writes, I'm proud to shine the spotlight up. Isn't. He had. Conversation. Others. Pounces. Often reflects on our experiences, learning. Successes and. This helps her. Strategies. Olivia keeps a positive. Third recall. Follows and. Optimizes during tough times. Fascinating. They're. They're taking a look. And. Students. Pictures. Home for cheer.
Hmm, there are banner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we need to. Yeah, whiteboard.
Mm-hmm.
Now, just a reminder, um, for our student spotlight parents, this is the point of the meeting where if you guys would like to go, you're more than happy or about, more than welcome to, or. You can stay for the next, um, hour, I'm assuming, for the board meeting. It's up to you. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Um.
Congratulations, kiddos.
Can I, I meant to say this is part of my report. Something. Student spotlights went over so well and so, so missed. We intend to kick off staff spotlight also for staff members that are going above and beyond that can be nominated by their coworkers. So.
I like it.
We're gonna start those, if not the next meeting, the meeting after.
Are we gonna do that school by school or just corporation wide or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's wonderful. I like it. Okay, item four, non-action, unified handbook.
Um.
Anything?
We, well, like Dr. Razor said during his, um, update, the policy committee was able to meet yesterday. Our goal was to be able to meet. Hopefully twice a month until we able, we're able to get all caught up. We'll be doing like. One with an afternoon session, and then we'll do another one with an evening session. And it's not a quorum, it's just three. It's myself, Mrs. Gandhi. Mrs. Steyer, um, we get to meet with Dr. Mike and Deborah, and we just go through all of the updates. And once we get a majority of those start knocking out, we'll be able to. Coincide as far as handbook policies. Ba-da-bing, ba-da-boom.
I won't hold you to it, but you have a roundabout timeframe of when it could be completed, just out of curiosity.
It's early spring.
Yeah, it's a draft, yeah, a draft.
The, the one thing we were, we are discovering in. I don't know if it's something we should be proud of, is we're finding some of the policies that need to be updated don't need to be updated because they've already been updated.
Cause we're so far behind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're, you know, and, and we had a couple actually come through today, policy committee that we worked on yesterday.
Oh, great.
So.
Is it the attendance one?
No.
I didn't understand that.
Okay, and I think we might do the, the two times a month and then once maybe in the evening orderly, just so that, yeah, so that we can still kind of keep some continuity there, but.
Yep.
It was a very productive session. It was, it was incredible to.
Well, we just need to keep.
Through those policies.
Keep it in the non-action, keep reminding ourselves, keep.
Yep, well, it's gotta be first reading and then second reading always, so.
Yep, next meeting there should be.
First readings.
And first readings.
Okay, item five, the consent agenda. Item A. Executive session, board meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Item B, the regular board meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The executive session board meeting minutes of October first, twenty twenty-five.
Third, sorry, you said first, I think it's October third on here.
Oh, it's actually October third?
Yeah.
Okay. Item D, field trip request. Item E, ETA purchase request. And item F, financial claims and reports. I have a motion a second to approve items A through F in the consent agenda.
Hold on, where did you get the third from?
On here, it says executive session board meeting minutes of October third.
First is the first.
Yeah. And so. So, so it was change, so was. It is the first, okay, so sorry, mine says the third.
I was looking for it too, I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't want, I wanted to make sure it wasn't correct, incorrect on camera, so mine says the third, so.
So, I'm just gonna read back item C, the executive session board meeting minutes of October first. Just to be clear.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it. Okay, questions on any and all of? A through F, what I would like to state by looking through all of our requests for field trips. Um. I'm very happy to see. That these are all coming in before the actual field sets, um, instead of retroactively going through these. I'm glad that that change has been administered. Um. Then on the financial. We have, Sam, you wanna read off the donations that we had?
Um, donations are the next item.
Oh, that, that was the whole thing I approved.
Nope. That's, we separated it, yes.
Donations are there.
We'll be doing this. Individually from now on.
Okay, that's funny.
So, the ETA purchase equipment, the headset request in here. Uh, tracking field has the starting block. System, that's it for the ETA.
Yep.
So, I got that.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, so, I have a motion second to approve items A through F. Had discussions. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. All those abstaining. And I'm abstaining because there is a claim from Keystone Cooperative who I work for for sixty-two ninety-one for September invoice.
I know it's already approved, but I do have one, actually a few quick questions. Um. There's a lot of, on the financials and claims, we've got. Lodging. Who, are we not allowing our, um, principals to be able to use the corporation credit card so they don't have to pay out of pocket?
They can, but at the time, the corporation credit card was maxed because we were working on getting it signed up. We got a larger credit limit on it now.
Okay.
We just still have one, or do we get one for, for three, one for, per building? Okay, yeah, cause then before you all got hired, I think our vote was to have a limit and, but they had to come to the super senate, and do you guys, for the administrators to do their stuff, for teachers to do their stuff?
Yeah.
We don't want them to have to pay out of pocket.
Yeah.
Our credit must be still good if we can raise it, alright.
Yeah.
Right, um, another question, I saw that, um, John Holder was bonded, every, has everybody been bonded that we approved? We're good to go on that, um. Frontline, have we implemented that system yet, are we using it? Or have we just, have we just been trying, we're, we're up and running? No, when, when do we expect to be up and running? Okay.
That's for the time clock system that we approved.
Yeah.
Meetings, three meetings ago.
Yep, yeah.
And we had no problem with the other vendor getting rid of the.
We've sent it to them.
We didn't pay them, so we were fine, okay, thanks.
Okay, um. I've got two more questions, the Castonia air conditioning work. Is that like age back air conditioning, or is that like?
Where's that at?
Very bottom, the very bottom.
Gastonia?
Yeah.
Sounds like it's.
It's on a tractor.
Well, that's what I figured, but I saw air conditioning, it's like.
You know, do, do you, like, we, you and I talked, do you actually get an invoice or something that shows for that?
Yes, we do.
Cause I would like, and I know I talked about you about, for the county, they get those to see when we're approving that stuff. Especially non-recurring stuff, you know, the monthly payouts, you know, contracts, things like that, it's a different story. But when you have specialty things like this, it'd be worth us knowing what we're actually spending on. So, is that Castoni invoice, I think we have questions about it, so if you can send us a copy of it or something?
Um, and then everything for the My View Literacy through Savvis, oh, I'm saying that right?
Savvis.
Savvis, was that included in like, and this is something you can get back to me on, if that was included in the original code that we were given back in like March? Okay, okay. Okay. Okay.
It's the same as what we order.
Back. Okay, okay, um, and then is there any way that we could, like, the rents, there's rentalier school corporation on here twice. You know, there's like tuition charges, and then there's a big one for fifty-eight thousand. Um. What? Are our students going there for?
Special education.
Special education, okay.
And this is us paying the cooperative, we pay them.
This is paying directly.
We pay them directly.
Yeah.
And then is it normal to have mileage for September close to almost two hundred dollars and over a hundred dollars? Where do our secretaries go that they have to get reimbursed? A hundred and seventy and a hundred and twenty-five dollars? Hey, the bank. And training, okay, okay.
So, that's the only purpose that they use that for, of the training?
Yeah.
Mail run daily, do we have a corporate car?
Well, we have one, like, you, we got, when you have four buildings spread out.
Yeah, but we can get more, yeah.
But do we want to get more?
That's how much you're paying in mileage.
Yeah, touche. That's it, sorry, it's already been approved, I just had one clarification.
Hmm, you don't have to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Okay.
Now the bottom ones, these we're gonna do individually.
Yeah.
Okay, donations, item A, accept the donation from the athletic boosters and the amount of seventy-five dollars to go to the JAC program for helping with concessions. I have a motion, a second to approve that amount.
Love to approve, second.
Any discussion other than thank you for that, that Diane and. Alright, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, and B, accept the donation from Walmart of school supplies valued at nine hundred dollars for North Newton School Corporation students, I have a motion, a second to accept that donation.
Love to approve.
Seconded. You know which, which Walmart?
I don't, I asked that very same question.
Probably Rinseler. Rinselear or? Okay, Mike, I have a question, on the donation for school supplies for students. When I got on here, and what I've always heard in the past is that the this budgeting or this accounting system here was so bad that teachers had to go out and beg and borrow and steal to get their own whatever, to be able to provide for the, um, education for the students. And, you know, one of our biggest things is, now that we're understanding and fixing our finances, what is that for? Cause that makes me wonder.
Walmart donating?
Right, doesn't somebody went out and asked for something, cause we don't have something? Or somebody just nicely said, here's, cause if it's, if it's the latter that they're going on, say, we don't have something, that's a reputation that I want to eliminate, if we can afford it, to not have our teachers, nor our parents, nor our students having to go out and beg, borrow, and steal to get money to function our classroom.
When I was a principal, Walmart, Target, sometimes even the grocery stores would show up at the beginning of the year with a basket of things. So I would say it has not been solicited, or if it was solicited, it's not out of necessity, it's, hey, Walmart's willing to give, you know. But yeah, we have, if any of schools are in need of supplies, just come to central office, because we have enough for the next hundred years.
Man, that should be part of your principal meeting, is what supplies you need, and just, he can bring his vehicle over and dump them off.
Do you know what supplies that they gave?
Usually it's crayons, notebooks.
But everybody already bought all of that stuff before school too, so why so late?
I don't know.
Probably they were clearing off their shelves, like, maybe they're not gonna store this in the back room for next school.
Christmas is coming, and yeah.
But the schools do have it where during registration, please correct me if I'm wrong, like during open registration, they usually put it, at least, I know at like Village, they have it where the cafeteria is open, and they've got a table that has backpacks. They've got a table that has notebooks, they've got a table that has crayons, markers, whatever is in our, like, donated supply.
Like I know at Lincoln, they would have backpacks, and it would have every single thing that you would need for each grade.
And that, and that comes from the Purdue Extension homemakers.
Yes.
What, they put those bags together, they get donations, not from the school, and then they do grade specific for all the schools in the count. They're, they are very generous, and they are very hardworking ladies, yes, so they, they do that very specific to the grade, so the kids get exactly what they need.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to accept the donation from Walmart, school supplies at nine hundred dollars for North Newton students. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Put me the motion second.
Diane, John.
Item seven, personnel reports, do I have a motion, a second to approve the personnel report?
No, do approve, second.
Okay, Dr. Mike, looks like we've got.
Yes.
Vera?
One hire and. Resignations.
We have some ECA.
Yeah, pretty routine. Personnel, one of the resignations is getting on there kind of late, we thought we had brought it forward and hadn't.
Day twenty-seven?
Yes.
Did we already fill that position?
We have not filled that position.
Not the one for like Village?
Uh, no, that's high school. Both of them.
Down with the custodian and a half.
Yeah, and what, uh, Mr. Hilsen and I discussed today is, we think we can take, we can cover custodian and a half with a full custodian based upon the new schedule. And we talked with the day custodians, and they're picking up some of the, some of the things that were being done overnight that could be done before kids get there in the morning.
On the, uh, hires for coaches, do we actually have enough for a freshman team? We had this big issue last year about this, I wanna make sure.
We don't know yet because we haven't had tryouts.
So shouldn't that be something that waits until we have tryouts?
The, well, a clarification, we actually discussed at bargaining last night, is the, especially the freshman and JV coaches act as varsity assistants as well, and help out with practices and those type of things. So we actually discussed with the union last night, because right now these are on the collective bargaining ECA schedule, is that it will say JV girls basketball coach slash varsity girls assistant, where we understand, because a couple years back, we had a basketball coach who didn't get paid because I think they were freshman coach, and there weren't freshman games because so many freshmen were on the JV team, and that person still came to all the practices, went to the games, did that, and then had to fight to get paid.
Well, for me, I mean, if you have a, but then, and we're gonna talk about this in our collective bargaining, if you have traditionally a small rural community four coaches in your basketball, football, the bigger sports. Freshman then has its own, and the four, usually it's head coach, assistant head coach, and then two JV coaches that, and then you get all the elements are for free.
Yeah.
All the people that sign up to go through, get hired. When you do a freshman, which I agree with what we talked about in collective bargaining, we're gonna get rid of that, because we don't really have any freshmen, we'll make it a JV slash assistant. But I think with this position, we may already have four basketball coaches, this would be the fifth.
And girls?
That's what I would like to clarify before we voted on it, cause I don't know if we need five paid coaches instead of four. If you had a true, you know, two A, three A school where you had a freshman team every year, it can be a big coach.
Yeah.
If you had, if this is a fifth coach, no matter who it is, to me, I don't think it's necessary.
It is my understanding that it is varsity JV freshman, I don't think there's a varsity assistant, just standalone.
Crap, but in. We're here, cause I coached for eight years here, literally, it's two, four coaches that were getting paid unless, somebody's changed that, and Tiffany's been on her since I coached. You had an assist, you had the head coach, assistant head coach, and two other coaches, that was it for football, basketball, all the big sports. And all the small sports, you only had two coaches, it was the head coach and some assistant, usually the head coach for varsity and a JV for cross country. What I'm saying is, I don't wanna add a fifth coach to the pay roster, if this person wants to volunteer, great. That's my personal vote, so I haven't looked at it completely, that's why the confusion for me last year was, is this an actual freshman team, or is it one of the other four teams that we already are paying? So, I'd like to have clarification on that before we go down that one for me personally. And we don't have our book with us.
No. I would ask for, uh, can we table this one for a second while I would go grab our ECA schedule?
Yes.
Or someone go, can you grab it?
I know we voted on a head coach for girls basketball, but that's all I recall.
That was all.
Yeah, that's all we. We've only voted on a head coach.
And I do believe that football does have four coaches.
I believe.
But, but yeah, if we can, we can go on to the next and just come back to that one, that would be.
Okay, so we'll just table that and we'll come back to it, once we get our.
I also know our girls volleyball had some freshman games this year.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to the action items. A Mohops, I hope I say this right, Lincoln, I, A phone, quote, do I have a motion, second to through the Mohops, Lincoln, A phone, quote.
Metaphor.
I will second.
What is this? So what this is, is this is the buzzer system at the school, and, uh, I have Miss Funston here, so if I get off course, but it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry. Right now, they only have one buzzer system into the school, and it's at the secretary's desk, so Miss Funston sitting at her desk can't see who's coming into the school, and sometimes the secretary gets up and people are standing there. So what this is, is a second monitor where she can see what's going on in the school and who's there. But the current monitor we have, and they showed this one to me, if you're standing there and somebody buzzes in, you can't see who it is. The camera, over time, has gotten to be very fuzzy, so I mean, you can't identify the, uh, who did the front door.
So, I deal with this, is this a camera replacement adding on? Looking at our IT guy over there, is this an external?
He doesn't know, he doesn't.
Is this an external camera?
It's a camera and one more monitor in her office and a buzzer.
Eye replacement at the jail, everywhere else I know.
That's a lot of money for a camera. Well, it's a second set of, it's another buzzer system and running wire too.
That's the part I'm getting at, what, what's, so in your area, you have one person that sits at an office that has access to their monitor for computers, and probably a monitor for the camera system, correct? This is doing what, moving accessibility to another office, that somebody would then be able to do the same thing? Place is the one outside for both, perfect. Yep. Right. Every other principal and all the other schools have that same connectivity?
Or multiple.
Okay. So then what are they, what are they putting in, they're replacing the camera? But it's literally just a monitor, is all that is, monitors are about a hundred fifty, yeah?
Yeah, communication system.
I deal with Mohops in the county, I know, this is ridiculous quote price, it is. Yeah, they do it for the county as well, so I'm saying that, I don't get that price point for the county. I'm voting against you.
Can you get a better price?
We need to talk.
We can pause and ask if we can get a, and it, well, here, this is the thing, we can pause and see if we can get a better price from them, or look for something else, because it, there is a safety issue at Lincoln.
It's gotta be fixed.
It's gotta be fixed, but if we, if we think we can get a better price, we'll, we'll, I'll give them a call in the morning.
Can we get something like that, like, as soon as possible, because she obviously needs it as soon as possible?
Well, it's not, it's soon as possible, but how long have you not had it? How long have you been a principal at this school, for over a year? So it is not.
Oh, so it's been that long?
End of the world, drop dead, gotta get it done.
Yeah.
Correct, it needs to be fixed and addressed, but it doesn't need to be fixed and addressed when we're getting twelve thousand dollars shoved in, wherever you wanna say it's gonna be shoved. Just my opinion. I mean. I mean, we put in security cameras, literally in the jail, for a quarter of this price. High-end, nice stuff from courthouse, all the other stuff, I'm looking at this, and it's for one camera, but it's not one monitor and some wiring to connect it all up to, that it connects.
But it is the buzzer.
Already in place.
It's the buzzer system and the two-way communication.
Correct. We, we have a Mohop system.
Yeah, we have a Mohop system.
So, that's the other thing too, it has to work with the current system that we have. So we can't go get from a competitor, and necessarily it's going to work with what we have.
No, but you can go back to Mohops and say.
You could go back to Mohops and say, can you drop it, but what I'm saying is, this is their system, so, you know, I can't come in and say, oh yeah, I could do that too. I mean, you gotta make sure that everything goes together and communicates properly, otherwise we're gonna have a bigger problem. Correct, and then it becomes an issue where you sit there and look at other vendors, because if they're not treating, it's government, and they wanna just put you over the barrel, then you find other vendors, cause there are other out there that do this.
But how can we go with another vendor if we use this company specifically for school safety?
We would have to dump them and go with a completely another, a completely other vendor.
Then we just have the time clock system, because day girls found a better solution for us, we dump them. But that's with all of our schools, right, or Mohop, so then if we dump them, we're gonna have to do four schools.
That's the same thing with our time clocks though.
Yeah. I understand that, but that sounds like an expensive route.
I can call. I can call. Mohops tomorrow and have them explain the pricing to me and. I mean, they don't even break it down in your quote. It is no detail in this, it says twelve thousand dollars. As somebody that represents the constituency of the county, I'm not voting on twelve thousand dollars for something that I know doesn't cost that much without details. You all can vote for it, I am not.
So can we table this until you get some more information?
We can, we can table it, I mean. Like we said, end of the day, we've gotta do it, but two weeks aren't.
Right, but I also agree with him, that is a lot of money just for one.
Yeah, I mean, it it is, I will say it's more complicated than all than a camera system simply monitoring, but yeah, they that. I agree with Mr. Mark, that quote needs more detail.
It's probably more complicated than what we're being presented on this quote.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for a statement of work also.
Are we tabling it or are we saying that?
I'll make a motion to table more.
Looking into it that we've give him permission to go forward with some kinda more detailed quote so that we're not making the school wait two more weeks. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, here, this is my thought, they, if we tell them go tomorrow, they're probably not here in two more weeks. So if I can get something from them and then scheduled, basically I'd have the work scheduled and we can always tell them to stop. If, you know, essentially that's what we did with the concrete for Lincoln is. We said schedule the work. Knowing we could tell them stop and then had the approval so that way we weren't waiting until spring to get the concrete done.
I make sure she gets what she needs.
I'll second to table it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table the Mohops iPhone, A phone quote. All those.
Just hold on, just for clarification, so you're saying hypothetically speaking, if this were to get passed right now, we would still be two weeks out?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, it it's scheduling a repair to get somebody out.
And they're not very responsive anyways. So motion a second.
Okay, okay, no more discussion? Okay, all those in favor to table the A phone quote, raise your right hands. All those opposed. Abstain, there we go, so three, three, one, good, so it fails.
It actually failed the table.
Uh huh.
It failed the table, so you have to vote on the whole thing. Sorry, Todd, that's your job, I'm sorry.
From my standpoint. I grew up. My grandfather owned a security company, my dad's still helping today, granted, we don't have a relationship, that's personal stuff, um. I grew up with this kinda stuff, even though I know that it's two weeks out, I'm not. I'm used to this type of pricing, if you think that there could be a better, then we're just gonna have to agree to disagree on this vote.
Well, not only that, it's just giving us better understanding of what we're voting on. You're voting on a piece of paper that says twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for. And there's nothing in it, doesn't even tell you what their hourly rate is, doesn't tell you the labor, how much it's gonna take, it just says these numbers. So I don't want to vote on something that I don't know. I mean, like keep Mike saying, there's more to it possibly.
And I I understand that, but I'm also looking at it from a safety perspective as far as. If we do approve it and they could actually get in here by the end of this week or early next week and it can get replaced, which is a much needed. Need for the safety of our students, then.
I mean, the world's a dangerous place, you don't know what's gonna happen.
The doors are still locked, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but when you have somebody that comes up to the door and they can't even see who it is that's being first in.
Question, they haven't been able to see who it is for a year.
I know, but we've also had a turnover of several administrators who unfortunately have failed us. And now we've got a good core group moving forward as far as, hey, this is what we need and this is for the safety of.
We wanna get you your safety, please don't think that we don't, your doors are still locked, but we still want to be able to get more clarification on this. I do. And to see if we can get some better pricing too.
I I think we need a better statement of work and I apologize. I made an assumption and that I will apologize to you for because that that statement of work, the price does not shock me, Mr. Mark, the. Lack of statement of work does. And it's not what I'm used to seeing.
Well, anytime we've done anything with security systems, it's.
It's high, it's high.
I. I'm not in the security business.
But I will get a better statement of work and I will circulate it with the board prior to the next meeting and.
So. We can vote on it again, if it passes, then obviously you're gonna request tomorrow.
E- even if it passes, I'm gonna ask for a better statement of work.
And it this, this doesn't necessarily mean if it, if we do, oh yeah, you're coming tomorrow, you still have to be the one that says. Listen, I talked to the board, they'd like a little more details before we would like you to work. Then you could provide that and then that could be shared with us and then we could move forward and say, oh yeah, that looks great. Um, it's still up to him, the bill will say yea or nay whether it passes or not, I mean, is that a good? Explanation, will everybody kinda understand that? And I think it's a good.
So we're voting yes, if he can get a better explanation.
So the motion to table it has died, so you could have another motion to try to table it or we can vote on it. Vote yes, no, abstain, but if you were to vote yes and pass, then that would allow back Mike to get. A more informed quote and he would still have to be the one that would have to say, yeah, go ahead and do it, but.
Make a motion to approve the. Mohops contract pending the superintendent's review and the disclosure to the board with the information of the statement of work. With his discretion approval once we've got that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve. A quote. As Mr. Mark stated, as long as you get a more informative quote. And make your right, Dr. Ray. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
For me, I hope that sets the stage for vendors that wanna just bill us for stuff that we don't have a clue what that is. I know that there's been board members on here before that have said, why are we paying Johnny or Suzie or X five thousand dollars? No one ever knows why that got paid, no one ever understands what that stuff is, we only get the claims, we need to have clarity when we're getting those. Thank you.
Okay, I have the resolution for the twenty twenty-five transfers from education to operations on, do I have a motion a second to approve? The twenty twenty-five transfers from education to operations.
That's the stuff?
Yeah.
We're doing the one from last year, right?
Yeah.
This is simply, well, A, the one from twenty twenty-five is formality, it's a, we we have to acknowledge that we do not intend to take. Really, the purpose of this is that we don't intend to take over fifteen percent, which is the state allowable amount of the education fund to be transferred into operations. That was not done for twenty twenty-five, which our fiscal year is rapidly ending, so we need to get that finished and then this next one is for the twenty twenty-six budget. Where we again are affirming we won't take more than the allowable fifteen percent.
But for clarification on, because we voted on and approved that budget, I go up and approve it last meeting that I was in that.
Yeah.
We only approved for nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's less than fifteen percent.
But at some point, we during this, during the year, we could amend and take.
Comes back to us and we vote on it.
And take more, but we're saying we're not going to take more than fifteen.
I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure that it has to come back to the board, that we have to vote on amending any more money to take out of education.
Yeah, and you have to approve it when we do it.
Yeah.
So even though the.
Cause when you put this amend thing, if you have resolutions, it gives the authority for our treasurer to transfer the money and all the others.
Yeah, e- even even though we said we were gonna take ten percent, when that ten percent is time to be transferred, the board approves that.
Yeah, cause we were told, we voted on last year, it was supposed to be four hundred thousand, and all of a sudden, we found out later, it was nine hundred thousand.
We approved four hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, had discussion, all those in favor to approve the transfers, raise your right hand. Thank you. Item C, resolution for the twenty twenty-six transfers from education to operations on, do I have a motion a second to approve the twenty twenty-six transfers from education to operation?
A motion.
I will second.
Same thing.
Same, just.
Yeah, this one's for the upcoming budget year.
The one in the previous one.
Yeah, it was for the year we're in right now, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, same thing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Item D, second reading and approval of policy zero one four two, which is the election of board. Members, do I have a motion a second to approve policy zero one four two, election of board members?
I'm voting to approve.
I'll second it.
Essentially. What we had talked about. Two or three meetings ago, um. Basically states that we will have a seven-member board, one from each township and an at-large. Um. Six from each township must reside. In that township, one at-large just needs to be in North Newton. Territory. Um, is there anything else on here that's?
We just need to add the adoption date in the second page. Um, and then we'll send a copy, Todd, you've already reviewed this and gave your opinion last meeting, I wasn't there, sorry, um, perfect. And then once we do this, we'll just send it off down to the county clerk and be ready for May's election process. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the policy zero one four two, election of board members, raise your right hand. Thank you. Brings me to public comment.
Yeah, we can go back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Never mind, my bad.
Okay, per the collective bargaining agreement, there is a varsity basketball coach, junior varsity, freshman are the three high school.
For girls.
Girls, yes.
Okay, the only one that retired has been the varsity.
Varsity head coach and now this is JV and freshman.
Okay, so these will be three coaches for that sport.
But then to. To Mr. Mark's point at the high school football level, there are four.
Basketball has.
Three.
Three, for boys too and girls?
Boys and girls three.
And then the other sports like softball, baseball, cross country, is it just two of varsity and JV?
Uh, cross country is just high school and junior high, uh, for. Or what was the other one, swimming is varsity and an assistant in the junior high. Yeah, football's the only one that has four.
And then we're gonna change this freshman one in our name and we hopefully.
Yeah, we'll be like to bargain.
I get so it's just JV and varsity.
That way, in case we don't have a pregnant teen, they can still have JV.
It's still varsity, yeah.
Don't wanna run into that again.
Yes, that's why I wanted to start by, perfect.
Okay, so.
We already had a motion on that.
We had a motion a second to approve it, we went back to it, we've had our discussion, all those in favor to approve the personnel report, raise your right hand. Thank you, now. No public comment, I believe. Okay, do I have a motion or do I, does anybody else have anything that they would like to add before we motion to adjourn?
I'm just gonna say this to to be transparent. I I know we have some administrators here tonight and with your announcement, so could we? Ask you to give a call to Catherine and Mr. Brooks to let them know so that. I know this is live streaming, but just get that conversation, that personal conversation, since they were not able to make it tonight and Mr. Zachary, so.
Bet you're gonna make a.
And and Mr. Hillis, I'm, so.
Thought you were gonna make him take a picture with all the administrators.
Do that in two weeks.
But that that way it's personal and.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, Catherine.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor to adjourn the meeting, raise your right hand, thank you, any adjourners?